Call the Tuesday, January 18th Sonora City Council meeting to order at 5:02 PM. Just a note, we have two council members that are on Zoom, Anne Segestrom and Colette Satch. So if it seems ready up here, we're actually almost full. So we're just waiting on Councilmember Garaventa, but we're going to call the meeting in order anyway. So a pledge of allegiance, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Plummer. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Hawkins?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer?
Here.
Councilmember Satch?
Here.
Councilmember Segestrom?
Here.
With Councilwoman Garaventa absent.
Excellent. Thank you. So we have four of us here so far. City Clerk's report on agenda posting.
The agenda was posted on Friday, January 14th at 12 o'clock PM.
Excellent. Approval of the agenda. Any changes or moving around or anything, Anne or Colette?
No, I'm good.
Okay, excellent. Okay, um, I just, let's see, public comment. This is on non-agenda items. And I think before public comment, I did want to recognize our Calaveras County Board Chair, Amanda Follendorf. So just wanted to recognize her. I know she can't hear me, so. I did not realize that was you, so thank you very much for being here. Excellent. Okay, so, public comment for non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to three, to a three-minute presentation. If participating by Zoom, please raise your hand or use star nine. And this is for anything that is not on the agenda. Anybody like to come up and speak? Not all at once.
It looks like we have a member of the public on Zoom.
Excellent.
All right, go ahead, Chris.
Oh, we've got one gentleman here. That's okay, sir. Go ahead. You were up here first. We're just trying to do two things at once. It makes it a little difficult.
I can't hear him.
My name is Don Nessel. I'm particularly interested in making comments about the work of the Social Equity Committee. I attended the meeting last week of the Social Equity Committee, and I'm very interested in why we would even need this resolution. If there were a resolution adopted, I would hope that it doesn't endeavor to create division in the process of trying to establish social equity. In the resolution, there are lots of insightful and divisive terms and things that if you were thinking of moving to Sonora or just coming up to visit, you may want to go to the city's website. And then you would read this resolution and possibly develop some issues of your own about coming up here. So some of it says, "In the past, in the Gold Rush history, we're proud of that, but there was a lack of morals and values demonstrated by racial profiling, exclusion, and mistreatment of Indigenous, Chinese, Mexican, Chilean, and other minorities." If I was Indigenous, Chinese, Mexican, or Chilean, I would suspect maybe that stuff is still going on. I don't want to go to that town. It also says, "They want to heal the wounds of racism." Well, this isn't the way to do it. The way to heal the wounds of racism is by welcoming people of other races. It uses the terms inequities of the past to reconcile the divide of the present and taking steps to make sure that racial profiling and acts of aggression against Blacks, Indigenous, and people of color will no longer have a place in this community. If I was coming up here, I'd go, "Oh, my gosh, what kind of community is that? They have all these acts of aggression towards these people?" "Racially motivated hate intolerance in the system of white supremacy culture." "The way to bridge the gap between the races is to not call all the white people white supremacists. You guys are all white. I'm sure you don't consider yourself a white supremacist." And then it goes on and on. So my point is, I don't think you need a racial equity statement. But if you want to make a statement, something like, "We welcome all races. We welcome all people," and they have all this stuff about sexual orientation, religion, disability, age, status, gender, blah, blah, blah. "We welcome all of you. Sonora is a peaceful, loving town, hoping to embrace you when you come to our community. We will not malign you. We will listen to your voice." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else like to come up for a public comment on non-agenda items? Then we will go to Zoom right after this. Trying to do it in some sort of order, so it doesn't get confused.
I was going to make a comment against Anne Segestrom, but she's not here. My name is John Flynn. I'm a city resident. And so I'm going to go to Section 2 or B or whatever. That's you, Matt, the mayor. I'm going to read something I read two weeks ago, and then I'm going to switch it up a little bit because it's not the same thing. And Title 18, United States Code, Section 2381, that's federal. "In the presence of two or more witnesses of the same overt act," overt means public, "or in the open court of law, if you fail to timely move to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and honor your oath of office, you are subject to the charge of capital felony treason." And therefore, now, when you guys shut down the, and hippie boy Jim Garaventa is not here. He was the Pro Tem's mayor back in March of 20, uh, March of 2020, uh, 2020. Now, shutdowns are illegal. You had no authority to do that. Nobody did. From Peggy Hall, www.thehealthyamerican.org, you can find a lot of, she's got a lot of free stuff there. Number two. Number two. "No governor or health officer has the authority to shut down your business without due process of law." That's the Fourteenth Amendment of the Bill of Rights. That means, and everybody's guaranteed that, that means no sheriff or health officer can close your business or revoke your license without a hearing. No emergency or pandemic suspends the Constitution, the U.S. Constitution. It's federal law. Can't do it. Y'all did it anyway. And so I'm going to, Matt Hawkins, get my glasses on so I can see you again. And then I'm going to place you under citizen's arrest under violating Title 18, United States Code 238, 28, 2381, Title 18, United States Code 2381. I'm making a citizen's arrest on a California penal code subsection 837, which is identical to the federal side. And I'm going to, I'm just excluding you, just, just you. Not, not the smart guy over here, not Mark Plummer. He's smart. And I don't know who that guy is, but I always tip my hat to a bald-headed guy, so I love Noah. I'm not being disrespectful. And who else? Let's see, not to the police, but overall, you, Matt, and the supervisors?
That's your time.
All bugs.
Time's up. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on non-agenda items? Okay, so we will move to Zoom, and I see Chris's.
Hand up.
Hi, I'm Chris Barsanti, and I just want to notify you that I'm here as a member of the Observer Corps of the League of Women Voters. And so we are monitoring your meetings along with the meetings of the Board of Supervisors. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm here since I choose not to be there in person. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for attending. Okay, anyone else on Zoom? Okay, and then I did want to make a note that Councilmember Garaventa is on the meeting now, so, yes, on Zoom.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Cool. All right.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Garaventa. Okay, so, moving on from there, no other public comment. Onto the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar considered routine and be voted on in one motion unless council member or members of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, item will be removed from consent calendar and considered separately. Item one is approved the city council minutes for May 17th, 2021, May 19th, 2021, and July 19th, 2021. And item number two in the consent calendar is approval of disbursements in amount of $177,203 and one penny for payroll inclusive of employee salaries, employer and employee taxes, and retirement contributions, miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions, holiday pay, and other adjustments, including retro pay. Any council discussion on this? I mean, myself looking at the screen more, so. Okay, Mark?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
We have to get public comment first. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Okay, so now I will bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Plummer, second by Councilmember Segestrom. We're going to have to do roll call vote since we have Zoom going. So roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Plummer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Satch?
Aye.
Councilmember Segestrom?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye. Okay, passes five to zero. Onto new business. "Consideration to adopt Resolution 118202A, proclaiming and authorizing remote teleconference and meetings of the city council and its committees and commissions for 30 days pursuant to AB 361 Brown Act provisions." I believe this one, who wants to take it?
Councilmembers, the item before you tonight is just bringing back the resolution for the required 30-day findings per AB 361. November of last year, a resolution was adopted authorizing the remote teleconferences for council meetings, commissions, and committees. So basically, the wording is the same in this resolution as was amended during the December 6th meeting. But also, again, once again, drawing your attention to second to last page and the second to last whereas, as typically, that's a primary focus of the discussion, identifying whether or not the hybrid model or both in person and teleconferencing would be in use.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, or is there any public comment on this?
Once again, I'm back, John Flynn. Okay, I read your thing, or AB. That's Assembly Bill 361 Brown Act. That has to make great, that's a violation of the U.S. Supreme, uh, Supreme, uh, U.S. Supreme, U.S. Constitution, which is the supreme law of the land. And you cannot go against that. The state can't go against it. It's under it. And that's backing it up. Source, 16 American jurisprudence, second edition, section 177, late second edition, section 2.6, semicolon, 1979. The U.S. Supreme Court is the supreme law, supreme law of the land. And any statute, that's a state statute, problem of state, to be valid must be in agreement. Now, if you're going to have a meeting, you have to be open. And you say, "No, we don't." Yeah, you do, because you're under the Constitution. You're not a private sector business. That's okay to do Zoom with private sector, but not with government, because you also are an oath to the Constitution. And the First Amendment says that I'm peacefully assembled. We're all here peacefully. And we're not running around like little monkeys running around making a big mess of things. And like in Jumanji, and that was a movie. And we're also here peacefully, I am peacefully assembled, that we have a right to grievance toward government. I'm doing that. Freedom of speech. I'm redressing the government, and you can't shut that down with remote viewing. That is totally illegal under the Constitution, and you're a coward if you think you're going to go in that direction. And that's my freedom of speech. That's what you all swear an oath to. Like I said two weeks ago, I have everybody who swore an oath. I have your oath of office. It is scattered all over Twomey County, Xerox copy, with the State of Jefferson crowd, our executive branch. And it's all over, farmers, ranchers, winegrower, property owner, just for safekeeping, that's all. And you are in violation of your oath of office under Title 18, United States Code 2381. It's a felony. Are you willing to go in that direction? You want to answer that or not?
Right now, you're giving your part as your freedom of speech, and we will answer any questions after the fact.
Okay, thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, and looking here on Zoom. No hands raised. Okay, so I will bring it back to the council for any discussion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we might want legal opinion, but I would note to Mr. Flynn that instead of reducing the number of people who can participate and take part in these meetings, what this does by going to Zoom is amplify it. I much prefer people being here. But this permits people who cannot make it to also have a voice in government. So I, I think your contention that this is illegal because of limitations is in fact not true if you think it through.
It's perfectly legal.
Well.
And it's been upheld in several different court cases, so. I don't know that I need to go through all of them, but, and there's also a separation between federal government and state government and things that are not specifically enumerated for the federal government to fall into the states for self-governance.
Well, I pretty much.
Constitutional lesson, but, but just to the point, it's completely legal.
Thank you, and I had presumed as much since you probably wouldn't have led us astray for the last year and a half. But I think that the contention that it limits argument or limits representation of people's capacity to gather, in fact, is not right, and it expands it enormously, so.
Okay, and then we had Councilmember Segestrom and then Councilmember Satch.
I would just like to point out that the Supreme Court itself has used Zoom during arguments. That's, that's it for me.
Councilmember Satch, thank you. Thank you, Anne. I was going to make that comment.
I'm just, I just would like to thank Mark and thank Doug and thank Anne for their comments and their, for their clarification. Thank you. That's it.
Excellent. So I, I mean, Mark, I can't reiterate what you said enough. And, you know, I've got some mixed feelings on this, but quite frankly, anybody that doesn't want to come to the meeting right now with this Omnicron thing going on, I can't blame them whatsoever. Had a couple friends that actually got it after having COVID and a couple months back. One of them is a social equity member, committee member Darren Dues, and he doesn't mind me talking about it, so. And I guess he lost about 10 pounds from the Omnicron, so he's, yeah, he's, he's a little touchy about that. So I would agree with your comments that it does amplify it. You know, I'm sure after this, somebody's going to get placed under another citizen's arrest, but I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm good with that. So I guess I'll call for the vote. So we'll have to do a roll call vote again.
Have we made a motion?
Sorry, a motion and then, yeah. Sorry, I took Mark's as a motion, so it's.
That was just an observation that I think is important in this. So I move to approve Resolution 01-18-2022-A, proclaiming and authorizing the remote teleconferencing meetings of the city council and its committees and commissions for 30 days pursuant to AB 361 Brown Act provision.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Mayor Pro Tem Plummer, second by Councilmember Satch. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Plumber?
Aye.
Councilmember Segestrom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Satch?
Aye.
And Mayor Hawkins?
Aye. Passes five to zero. Okay, next one, under new business, item number four is consideration to approve a letter of support for the Sunshine Hill Jamestown Road shaded fuel break project and authorize the mayor to sign the letter. It's confusing tonight for me, too, so I'm a little, it's like.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, this is a recommendation to consider to approve a letter of support for the Sunshine Hill Jamestown Road shaded fuel break project and authorize the mayor to sign this letter. Twomey Fire Safe Council, they did change their name from Highway 108 Fire Safe Council to now Twomey Fire Safe Council, asked for a letter of support for this project. Project covers 31 acres along a portion of Twomey County busiest main roads and Jamestown Road. It leads from the town of Jamestown north towards Highway 49 and the Columbia area with several main arteries leading into Sonora and areas to the east. Sonora city limits are just under one mile to the east and two miles east from downtown Sonora. Within the immediate area along the shaded fuel break are approximately 115 homes and another 500 homes within a mile and a half of the project boundaries. So it does list out these project areas. I did include a map. It did not look like, when I printed the agenda, the map printed with that. So I can have the city clerk post that up on the website if anyone wants to see that area in a mapped format. But, you know, any, anything that's going to reduce the fuel load in the, in the county and the surrounding areas of the city, I'm definitely in support of. And so I come before you to support their project and a letter of support for their grant opportunity. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council? None from GM, I'm sorry. Councilmember Segestrom?
Yeah, I just, you know, I totally support their, their efforts, but the first paragraph, the, I'm sorry, the second paragraph, the first sentence, I, I think that there's either a comma or some kind of punctuation or the word "and" missing after businesses. It, it, it doesn't, it doesn't read coherently.
Sorry.
It says, "The project offers greater fire protection for area residents." Yeah, so just FYI.
Should be a comma after businesses and slows wildland fires leading into heavier residential and commercial areas near Sonora. So yes, that should, should be there. Sorry.
No, I just thought you would want to make that. Yeah, correction.
Cool. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, did you have any questions?
Just the observation, anything that we can do that lowers our fuel load is wonderful, and I support this project 100% or more, but pretty math focused.
You're taking all the good lines from me this, tonight, so.
Well, you can go with 120%. And that's often used. So just, I'm a little pedantic about, or two and two would be equally.
What, four? Well, and to, for the public's knowledge, I think you're the only council member, probably since Ronnie Stern, that has actually went out and fought fires. So just want to throw that out there. Anyway, um, any other council member questions for, I asked for public comment? Cool, so we will ask for public comment. I believe there's a gentleman here that is, might want to make a comment or two.
I'm Dave Switzer with the Fire Safe Council and the one that put this project together. And I want to thank Amy for sure for bringing it into the council, putting it on the agenda. I again think this is an important fire prevention item. The city council, a year ago, gave support for one up at Apple Valley in Meadowbrook on the east side, and it was funded by CAL FIRE, and that's quite an accomplishment, because only about one in 10 get funded in any one year. So all the support we can get through cities and counties, it goes, I think, a long way in justifying and getting support at the state level. And this is a, actually a fairly small project, 31 acres. But if you look on the map, it for sure will offer a lot of protection or reduce the consequences of fire if we, when we get it done. And I do appreciate, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions.
I would just thank you, Mr. Switzer, for your efforts in pushing these and your work on the Fire Safe Council. It's.
It's a group effort.
Well, I, I, yes, I have attended as well, but thank you, and this is yeoman's work that we really appreciate.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we really do, really do. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay, look for any Zoom. Anyone on Zoom would like to speak on this? Don't see any hands. Okay, is there any other council member comment or questions before I ask for a motion in a second? Okay, so I guess I will look for a motion in a second.
Well, since I'm present.
I'd like to move to approve the letter of support for the Sunshine Hill Jamestown Road shaded fuel break project. Do not provide a time to learn.
I don't care. That's awesome. Okay, so motion by Councilmember Garaventa and second by Councilmember Satch. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Plumber?
Aye.
Councilwoman Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Segestrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Satch?
Aye.
And Mayor Hawkins?
Aye. Passes five to zero. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, onto new business, item number five, "Consideration to improve an employment agreement between the city of Sonora and Melissa Eads for the position of interim city administrator with a base salary of $140,000 annually and for a term of six months."
Mr. Mayor, our city attorney will be delivering the staff report regarding the interim city administrator employment agreement.
Mayor, council, and public, what you have before you is a six-month agreement. It's for an interim position. This isn't the permanent position. And it would be on a basis of an annualized $140,000. Sorry, so it's half of that, you know, for this. There'd be a three-month evaluation to look at it. It's on, it's substantially the same terms as our former administrator received before she departed, and it would be with a start date of tomorrow. Just based off of some correspondence we received, they did reach out to different members of the city of Angels and was told to, that I have permission to, to say that this Sonora's decision for the, with regards to Ms. Eads is supported by the current mayor, Al Vembrilio, former mayor Joe Olivera, who I believe is on Zoom, as well as the mayor before that, Amanda Follendorf, who's also here in person as the Calaveras County Supervisor and Chair at the moment, in addition to the Police Chief and the Fire Chief. So they all said that I could publicly state that and put that in the record for consideration. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you have. As it is well-known, I'm also the city attorney for the city of Angels Camp as well, so.
Okay, um, you know, I'll, I guess I'll start off with a couple questions, Doug, because I, the public's, the, the questions I get from the public usually are, "Why is this so much? $140,000 is a lot of money," which it is. I mean, it's just, that's just the reality. I don't even think I make a third of that. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of, you know, so there's a lot of questions. So I'd like to get a few of those answered. Within the hiring of what we're doing now with the city of Sonora, we've still got a balanced budget. We're still moving that sort of thing. we've still got a balanced budget. We're still moving that sort of thing. What, on average, is the average, uh, city administrator or city managers uh, pay throughout California? I know Lincoln popped up for us.
Yeah, so, um, as you know, I represent nearly fifty different cities or special districts in the state of California, um, and, uh, serve as either city attorney or assistant city attorney, um, in, in about twelve of them. Um, the, uh, going salary rate right now is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for city administrators. Um, but that's dramatically improving right now. So, for instance, Sean Scully, uh, who I worked with, who just left the City of Riverbank to go to the City of Lincoln, uh, went from making, um, a little bit below that number I just gave you to just being offered two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, and we're expecting that administrator salaries will, will eclipse two hundred thousand dollars fairly regularly, particularly for cities above twenty thousand or more. Um, that doesn't fit Sonora, uh, category of, of, of being that high, but in terms of the going, going rate, um, you very rarely see anything below one eighty or, um, now pretty much two hundred.
Um, what is the average lifespan for a city administrator or city manager in the state of California?
So, in the state of California, the average, uh, city administrator or city manager, depending on how you deem, you call them, uh, is about three and a half years currently is the average tenure. Um, tends to correspond with elections and, and changes in council.
Yeah, we, we were very fortunate as the City of Sonora. We had Greg Applegate for like eighteen years or so. It was a super long time, and then we also had, um, city administrator Tim Miller here for about a decade. Um, so I got to work with both those gentlemen, but, um, just get a couple of questions out because I know we're going to have those coming up to us. Um, uh, I think that's all for right now, so I guess I will ask the council if they have any questions before we ask for, uh, public comment. Jim's shaking it. Oh, Anne.
Well, I, um, no, I, I mean, this is more of, um, uh, just a contractual legal question, uh, for our attorney. I was just curious, are all contracts written with the gender of the, um, uh, of the applicant or the, uh, of, of the intended employee used? I, 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 I was just curious because, I mean, she is used throughout, and I would have thought maybe it would have been the employee or whatever, more, more neutral, but it was.
Um, I guess the gender pronoun is more often used than not. Some, sometimes it, you know, it's, it's just that as opposed to using like the last name or employing. So, this is probably written the way that it's typically drafted, and it, and it was, and it was drafted by a woman. Um, so Deborah Hinshaw-Vier is the one who drafted it, so, um, but this is typically the way that they're, they're drafted.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Such?
Um, hi, thanks. Um, I have a, also contractual, um, question, and, and I'm assuming this was on our last administrators. Um, part of the, her contract as well, although it doesn't seem entirely fair to me. Um, it's section eleven, termination of employment, and it's the, um, third paragraph of eleven point two, and it starts out, "In the event employees and terminate, employee is terminated by the city council for misconduct, which is when publicly disclosed and could stigmatize the employee, employee's reputation or impair her ability to earn a living. Employee may, within ten calendar days, make a written request for name clearing, hearing, um, before the city council. Any such name clearing hearing will be solely, will be held solely, um, wait a minute, hearing will be held solely be to the, provide that, will be held solely to provide employee an opportunity to clear her name. The city council may be turn, may determine whether the allegations in the notice of termination are supported." And this is the part I don't understand. If the city council determines that the allegations are not supported, a decision shall be issued to reflect the employee's termination was without fault. Such a decision, however, will not require that employee be reinstated to her position. So, if someone makes a false allegation against the city administrator, and he or she comes before the council, and the council finds that it was not, um, that she was not, he or she was not at fault, we can still terminate her without cause?
So, you can, so the contract makes clear you can always terminate somebody? These are at-will positions? Um, in a typical contract for somebody who isn't in an interim position, there'd be a severance clause. The typical severance clause in California is anywhere from six to eighteen months uh, for administrators, and so, uh, so typically what would happen is, well, that's true of all contract employees, so. Um, and so what would happen then is you could still fire somebody, but you would, they would just be entitled to, or let me use the correct word, you can still terminate somebody, but it, um, but they would still be entitled to, um, severance under that. There is no severance in, in this particular contract because it's an interim contract. And, and it's, and it's there for a specific term, so it's a, it's just a six-month contract, but if there was ever any kind of misconduct, obviously it can be, you can always terminate a contract for misconduct.
Right. Well, okay, I, so the difference is that this is an interim contract. That make, I understand that now. Thanks so much.
Jim or Mayor Proton Plummer? Doug, could you define interim for me?
Temporary, not permanent. And so, so, um, what we've set out is an interim contract, so it's for specific terms of six months. Uh, we have agreed to do a three-month review, and at that three months, uh, to make a decision about whether or not we would like to consider it or permanent. But that's, we're not making the permanent decision tonight.
Thank you. Okay, if there, are there any other council member questions or comments before I ask for public comment? Okay, so I will ask for public comment on this matter. Come on up.
We also have a Zoom hand.
Oh, yes, and just so the person that raised their hand on Zoom, we're, we're not ignoring you. We're letting the, uh, uh, crowd inside comment first, and then we're, we're doing that in this order, and then Zoom.
Um, good evening, Mayor, city council members, staff and attendees. Uh, my name is Derek Nunes. I'm the owner of Phone Smart here in downtown Sonora. Now, most of you know me, and I've done business with me at one time or another, uh, but due to times and strange, you don't usually see me here at city council meetings. Uh, I did close my business early to be here this evening out of concern about the council's choice for a new city administrator. I did email all five of you last week, but I had only received three responses at this time. Um, before I go any further, I'd like to ask Mr. White if that's okay, a question?
What we'll do, we'll, we'll get the, what, you can ask the question, we will answer it.
Okay, well, let me just go through what I had to say. In my email, I did raise my concerns about Ms. Eads' suitability to be our new city administrator. And I also made the suggestion that the city council reach out to her former employee, uh, employers in Angels Camp, as well as having your department heads do the same. I'm here today to publicly state my concerns on the record. Uh, my first concern is based on Ms. Eads' involvement in an ongoing lawsuit against her former employer regarding her handling of employee F M L A. Uh, second, her failure to inform employees of changes to their job title and position until after a decision was made. Third, telling employees they could not go directly to the city council with their problems or concerns. And finally, hiring a finance officer without properly posting the job internally or publicly. Uh, I would like to ask the council these two questions again on the record. Have you spoken with the City of Angels Camp or directed staff to, on your behalf, to judge Ms. Eads' performance as city administrator while she was employed there? And also, has council inquired or directed staff to inquire about Ms. Eads' reason for departure from her previous position at Angels Camp? I would like to urge the council to hold on hiring an interim city administrator at this time until looking into these concerns further. I'm currently in the process of filing a Freedom of Information Act request with the City of Angels Camp to bring you more information, and I would like to suggest appointing a department head in the meantime to fill in. Um, and then I did have one additional question from Mr. White. If he would answer it, uh, you were talking about the severance here recently. Is it common for an employee who resigns to get severance pay as well? Okay, and that, that is in.
Your, your questions definitely will be answered, Derek, so. Okay, would anyone else like to come up? Ms. Follendorf?
Is it okay if I pull to speak? Okay, thank you. Good evening. It's an honor to be here tonight, um, Mayor, rest of the city council. Um, I, um, for those of you that do not know who I am, I am Melissa Eads', um, former boss. Not only at the City of Angels, but also at the Council of Government, where she served for the Calaveras County. Um, I have known Melissa for close to a decade, um, in a professional capacity. Uh, if there is anyone that I can, uh, stand up here and say that she's the right person for the job, it is, it is her. And there are very few people in this world that I think I would stand up and speak publicly on her behalf to support. There is a quote that I would like to read for you. Leadership is not an affair of the head. Leadership is an affair of the heart. Serving people means growing their capacity and implies that everyone can contribute, and the servant leader believes that my success is your success. Over the last ten years, Melissa's success has been all of our success on board. We have come and gone, but her leadership has shown and the wind that she has made for not only the county of Calaveras, but also the City of Angels. Uh, she has also done remarkable job starting her career off in the county of Twomey as well. And just a couple of highlights of what she has done, um, over the past couple of years, which we'll start to see over the next several months, she's brought thirty million dollars in road funds to the City of Angels. That doesn't even include the numbers that she has brought into the county. Currently, we are working on a thirty-year plan of the wagon trail, which is the Highway Four alignment corridor through the entire Calaveras County to Alpine. That was her. That was her vision. She had moved, and she had moved mountains to get that going. We are glad to see this month, actually in the next month, we will be finally hitting ground. She has fought to bring in more revenue into the city alongside of our council. In this year alone, she brought in two point five million dollars in additional revenue for the city. She has also ga- improved our partnership, relationship with not only our exterior, but our business community, and has brought tenfold a bu- business, bringing the level of expectation from the city hall. She has gained respect within the community, not only in the city, but also the county. Of all her strengths, her loyalty and honesty is one of the biggest outside of her heart, being a servant's heart. And I would encourage this council and this city to continue to support her in this war, and I hope that you see what she has to bring. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? You can wear the hat up here. It don't bother me.
Don Nessel, so I noted the hundred and forty thousand dollars and then the allusions to two hundred thousand dollars and two hundred fifty thousand dollars. To continue to award people in public office with more and more money while the private sector struggles to raise their rates of pay by negotiating and so forth is, uh, a bit ridiculous in my mind that the City of Riverbank, I don't know how that compares to the size of Sonora or the City of Lincoln, but nonetheless, all those cities, if any city administrator is being paid two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than the President of the United States, I think we are really blowing it. So, uh, I, uh, participate, you didn't hit the three-minute thing there. So, um.
It's okay, I'm taking the time.
I participate in the public employees retirement system of, um, medical insurance, and I went to T U D at one time and asked him, what do you do when you negotiate for this? Look for the highest prices? Don't you ever think of maybe that you'd want to beat those prices by looking around? I think you need to do the same thing with these city administrators or any paid positions. You pay fair, but you don't pay so much money that the people in the public say, do you know how much they make? Like, they and us are two different things. We're talking about social equity committee, and let's get some equity and equal things going with the, uh, pay for the public employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we will move to Zoom, and let's do the two oh nine, two eight eight, zero three seven four number.
Uh, zero three seven four, dial star nine to unmute.
I think, yep, that's weird. Okay, so if they don't unmute, oh, there we go.
On November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, the former.
Oh, can you speak up a little bit, please?
Registration effective January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. The city council met four times following this announcement without once addressing or publicly announcing that they would be conducting a replacement search. On January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, in closed session, the city council directed staff to negotiate an employment agreement with Melissa Eads for the position of the interim city administrator. This interim appointment lacks transparency and lies in the face of the city's promise of social equity. The city formed a social equity committee to ensure opportunities were available to indigenous, Chinese, Mexican, Chilean, and other minorities as stated in the draft proposal resolution on social equity. This appointment lies in the face of the promises made by the committee and, per the pending resolution, section one B, I quote, "Whereas the City of Sonora affirms its wish to be known not only for the beauty of its place in the Sierra Nevada foothills and its vibrant gold country history, the city wishes to also be known for being a champion of racial equity, justice, and acceptance," end quote. This appointment shows the ineffectiveness of this committee and leaves the council with the appearance of hypocrisy. I would request that the city council dissolve the social equity committee immediately and conduct an open recruitment process and thorough search for the next city administrator, whether interim or permanent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, um, I guess the next one was Joe Oliveri, I can't, Olivera, okay.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on, uh, Melissa's behalf. Um, I won't cite the details that, um, Amanda was able to bring forward, but I will tell you that, uh, in my experience with, uh, Melissa, uh, you'll find her an excellent crisis manager. Uh, the things that came our way, as you well know, with respect to, you know, COVID, uh, we had a massive B L M, uh, uh, demonstration, uh, public works projects, hard decisions, uh, she came with great reconciles, uh, to just everything that came her way. Uh, in addition, you're going to find that she's responsive. Um, you're going to hear from her at ten o'clock at night or two in the morning, whatever it takes to get the job done. So, um, I think, uh, you'd be fortunate, uh, to hire for this interim period, which would also give you an excellent opportunity, um, to see her, in her element. So, thanks again for your opportunity to speak and, uh, best wishes in your decisions.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone else? I see the one hand raised is still raised for that two eight eight number, but, yeah. So, is there anyone else? Okay, I believe I see Tristan Salata. Okay, go ahead, Tristan.
Thank you very much. Uh, I don't know if I have much to add, other than I hope that everybody recognizes that area code two oh nine, two eight eight, oh three seven four is an agent provocateur.
Yeah, I'm, okay, yeah. Okay, is there anyone else? I don't see anyone else raising their hands on Zoom, and is there anyone else in the audience before I bring it back to the council? Okay, so I will bring it back to the council. Any more discussion? There were several questions that were raised.
To go over, uh, so let me go to the.
To go over. So let me go to the, then I think just I think the easiest one is the payment comparison between I, I, I think the mayor was just bringing that up to say what the current market looks like. So it's not a thing of they versus us. It's just a matter of stating kind of like what the current market is for people who occupy those positions to kind of give a point of, a point of reference. And as you'll notice, what's being offered here isn't in the same realm of what we were talking about, who are being paid in, in, in Lincoln. The second thing, social equity committee, I only go to say that that hasn't been brought to, that resolution has not been brought to council. It's not an operative document against council at this point in time. So I think that that's all needs to be said. As it relates to kind of the more specific instances, I obviously, because I'm I happen to be the city attorney for Angels Camp, I can't go into the specifics because, but I happen to know all of these situations. And I would say that if there was anything that would give me concern, I would obviously make it known to the council, not sharing information that I couldn't share, but letting them know that there were issues that they could be concerned, that they should be concerned about. I think the fact that the last three mayors, one of which is the current county chair of the Board of Supervisors in here tonight, as well as the police chief and fire chief, as well as the city attorney, all saying that, you know, they support endorsing the decision is, you know, that kind of explains, I think, or gives context to it. At least as much as I'm allowed to legally do without getting disbarred. So if anybody has any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anne or Collette or Jim, do you have any questions for Doug or any comments with this?
I, I would just like to say, as far as equity is concerned, having been a woman businessman, business person that I, you know, and the fact that our history, as you pointed out, was it 28 years of men leading the city? That maybe it's just a you know, it's maybe time to see if we can, if we can even that balance. But I would also suggest that Melissa has a master's degree. And there are, you know, some compensations for pushing your, your education forward and giving your best side to your employer. So just on those two notes, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other members of council? Nothing from Jim. How about you, Colette?
No, I, I, nothing. I'm, I'm comfortable.
Okay.
Thanks, though.
I think it's only fair, well, it seems very dear, the prices paid for administrative staff and public employees across the board, if one's in the private sector, and it is. But one has to realize that this is the marketplace as it is, and we still have to fill, uh, fill this position with a capable, able person. And that is what it's going to take financially. If one can squawk all one wants about how overpaid they might be, but you still have to fill it from the marketplace available. It's like telling your dentist that his $150 or $200 for a filling is too much. But you won't find any other dentist willing to do it for less, much less trained to do it for less. And in that environment, you try and get the best person you can at something you can afford. And I think we are actually doing good work here. And I'd like to thank Ms. Eads for accepting and coming forward for this interim position. So thank you. And the public needs to know that this is not as easy and simple as saying, well, I only want to pay, I don't know, let's say $80,000. Well, be that as it may, you won't find anybody at that price, period. So be aware of that when you judge the city council for our lavishness. Because it's not quite as easy as it looks from the outside. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, you know, I can guarantee to the public, anyone that knows me with any reasonable knowing me and, I mean, the council to be, to be fair. No one was just automatically chosen. It wasn't something, I mean, I've had one conversation and that was during the interview process with Melissa. And I wanted to make sure personally for me that it was kept very professional, non-buddy-like. I've never met her before, but you know, I know, I know a reputation and your reputation is good as far as I know. But one of the things that I want to make it very clear to the public is that and the other council member I talked with about this said the same thing, you know, we wanted to make sure we found the best person. So there was something about, you know, social equity and making sure they're a person of color, you know, one, we legally can't, we legally can't discriminate. That, that's the law. That's a fact. That's a law. So if a white man or a black man or black woman or black lesbian came in and they're the best person for the job, that's who we should hire. Not, we don't have 100 checkboxes to find out what race they are. We don't ask for a blood test, nothing like that. So that would simply be legal. So I mean, I, I don't know what else I could even answer to that other than I'm not going to break the law. And I believe we hired the right person for this job. So that's, I mean, that's what I feel. The questions that this council came up with were very good. All of us have been involved in business in some sort, some way, somehow. So all of us threw great questions. We had several candidates and it made it very tough for all of us. All three candidates that we received, I, I felt were very well qualified. So it looks like council member Sutch wants to say something.
Thanks. I just want to assure the public that this council struggles with executive salaries. We know what our budgets can allow and, and that was, and there are conversations, we have these conversations frequently. And it's not something that we take lightly. And 140,000 is actually at the low, lower end of the city administrator scale. So that's it for me.
Okay. Um, any Jim or Anne, just look and see if y'all want to say anything before I ask for motion and a second. And just, just so anyone from the public knows, and Derek, you, you know, you've got a great rapport with me and I consider you a friend. So I hold you in very high regard. I'll, I'll definitely say that. If there's anything you want to share with me, obviously it's okay, I, I thought we did, Doug. So it's not on purpose, so.
I'm sorry, what was the, what was the comment?
So I answered the ones, okay, so. First question was about employee FMLA. That's a lawsuit that we're currently litigating. There was an investigation. I can't go into it. But the city is defending the lawsuit. Our law firm is the one that's defending it. I'm intimately familiar with it. So I can't talk about it other than what's, what's been, been filed, which is that the city disputes. That employs allegations and that's supported by the investigation that was conducted. The hiring of the financial officer without some kind of things. Well, I mean, it's just like any employee, you're not required to, you, there are processes that you can go through to hire somebody, but you're not, you're not legally required to post every position and have every position, have people apply for it. If you know somebody's good, you fit there, you can do that. Change your job responsibilities. I'm, I think I know what he's talking about, but I'm not sure. I'd have to talk to him more about that offline. Because I think he's talking about someone close to him. And then, and then the severance, you know, when, when it is very typical for a city administrator, if they're not released for cause, to have their, to have a severance that's invoked and be paid that, that's, that's would happen in probably 90% of the, of the plus cases. So there's ever a severance and you're released as administrator without, without cause, then you get paid severance. So that's, it's, I think that answers all your questions with the exception of the one. No. No.
Yeah, yeah, that we, I'm sorry, with, with it being HR, some HR issues, we, I don't think we can get into that. If there's anything.
And it, it, it's common in all cases when there's a, when there's a departure to get severance under those situations. I can't get into specifics of it. You know that. So I, I mean, I will say that this is a little bit more complicated because this gentleman's wife works at Angels Camp, so
Yeah, and I want to make sure.
So it's, it's a little bit of a, it's, it's, it's a little bit more complicated, so.
And honestly.
And I can't, I mean, I can't, there's certain things I can't talk about, even if he's the husband of an employee.
Yeah, and I want to make sure everybody's protected in this too. So I, again, Derek, we'll, we'll talk later and I Yeah, so.
So. So, so I will say that with administrators, it is not uncommon to get severance when you're released or, or when you depart, when it's, when it's, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. And then, you know, the contract comes up in six months, roughly, was it not roughly, within about three months, we start looking, you know, asking quote, whatever, however we go. So but this council is, I feel done their due diligence, asked all the right questions. So I may not always agree with what we're doing or what we say, but I can tell you this council's worked very hard on this, very hard. And put in a lot of time. So I guess I will ask for a motion and a second. And I was just making sure none of the other council members had any questions, so. Looking for a motion in a second.
I will make a motion to approve an employment agreement between the city of Sonora and Melissa Eads for the position of interim city administrator with a base salary amount of $140,000 annually and for a term of six months.
Second. Okay, motion by council member Sutch, second by Mayor Pro Tim Plummer. Roll call, vote please.
Mayor Pro Tim Plummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Aye.
Councilmember Seagerstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutch?
Aye.
And Mayor Hawkins?
Aye. Okay, passes five to zero. Welcome, Melissa. Very thankful to have you, so. Okay, so on to council member department head reports. We have monthly reports, but those are given to us in writing in case the public ever wants to look at them. So council member department head reports. Chief New.
Good evening. Just wanted to report back that the Chicken Ranch Trenchia Tribal Council met and approved the consulting agreement. So I will have that for the city clerk to bring back to the, to city administrator to review, but both sides now have approved the contract and we had our first meeting today. So we're starting that process of going through what needs to be done to start the new fire department. So progress is being made.
Bravo. Chief Vanderwheel, whatever comma we can put next to it, temporary city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Not much. Just wanted to point out that January is National Mentoring Month and city of Sonora and, and my department, we, we value and heavily rely on our volunteers, as you know. So where there's volunteers, there's mentors and they put a lot of extra time, effort, energy into training and guiding and such. So you want to recognize those, those city employees that, that put that extra effort forward and also out there in the community, thank you for, for helping develop our, our volunteers.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, um, see our finance guy, Chris Korski. Okay. I know I'm gonna probably forget somebody tonight because it's such a different night. Rochelle, okay, I do, she is here. Okay. Thank you.
Rochelle, do you want to just talk about the hearing today? Yeah. Just, just what they added.
Thank you. Yeah, I did, we did want to bring up then today, tonight, we, we did speak in front on the Hidden Terrace project for the county. We have been working with county staff. We also met with the applicant, their applicant, and they did make some revisions to the conditions to address some of the city's concerns. We did let them know that we appreciated that. We appreciated them working with staff and that their staff was very helpful. There'll be some additional reviewing that the city will be allowed to participate as the project moves forward with, to, like I said, to address some of our concerns. We did, I also did advise them that the city attorney and the administration staff for both the city and the county's attorney will be looking at impact to city services and our facilities and our as we move forward, but more as a global than just project specific. So that, that was at the meeting today prior to this, so.
I don't think anyone realizes how hard you have worked on this project. So I just want to say thank you.
Oh, no problem. Worked in coordination with the city attorney's office and it's, it's, it's gone well and the county staff has been very, very easy to work with. So I just, I, I wanted them to know that in the public meeting.
Thank you. And I think it's also appropriate for the city, I mean, council to thank the county staff and leadership along with the applicant because it didn't have to go this way and we really appreciate it.
Yes, that's why I wanted to speak today. I wanted that known.
Thank you. Okay. Melissa, did you want to say anything?
I just want to thank all of you for the consideration of my contract. I'm grateful to be here for as long as you all have me. So I look forward to working with you on your policy direction and I really look forward to working with the department heads on their implementation of that policy direction. And I'm truly grateful for the people that came to support me in this position, including my family. And so thank you all and I'll do my best.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney? Nothing tonight. Oh, cool. Okay, I haven't forgotten anybody so far, right? It's my bad habit. Okay, so I will go to council member Seagerstrom.
Always get the first, the first stab. Well, I would like to thank Chief Vanderwheel for stepping into the breach and serving as, as our interim administrator for these past four days. It was much appreciated. I also hope that all of our, our, our employees and, and city management will work to make Melissa's transition as harmonious and seamless as possible. And so, and then beyond that, I went to the Yes Partnership and heard about the tobacco control program. I was astonished that vaping in the county, it's like 20, 21% of 11th graders are vaping and 17% of ninth graders are vaping. So all the kind of flavored vaping, but you know, I mean, you're just like, wow, really? I can't, it's hard to, it's hard to imagine. So they, they're working hard at the tobacco control program, program to reverse this trend. And also is the Center for Nonviolent Community announced that it is stocking awareness month. And Supervisor Kirk announced that all the, all the youth oriented programs, nonprofits in the county will have an opportunity to present to the Board of Supervisors on, on their first meeting in February. What else? I attended the Blue Zone Policy Summit. I'm very hopeful that some of their initiatives will move forward. They're, they're very positive for the county's future. And as for the Ad Hoc Energy Committee, we, I attended a free building energy use inspection and evaluation. And I learned a lot. So I'll probably be on the city council to continue. I know I will be on the city council. I know I will be on the city council to continue to um, look at a an energy climate change um, uh, committee sanctioned by the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Uh, council member such.
Um, thank you, Mayor Hawkins. I'm on the on the tenth, I attended social equity. Um, one of our committee members was absent that night, Darren Duas, so we did not speak. Um, I I asked that we not tackle white supremacy culture. Um, because I felt I feel like his voice is important and it just it was respectful to him to not. Um, bring not tackle that project. So we moved forward and I think actually made a lot of progress that evening. Um, on the eleventh, uh, I think we had the um. City administrator interviews. On the twelfth, I um, attended the Twomey County Commission on Homelessness Outdoor Shelter Ad Hoc Committee. And that committee actually has has done a lot of work. We don't, we certainly haven't chosen a site for an outdoor shelter, but. We came out up with this a scoring system for sites to give to the um, county and the city if we were to choose. Look at at a site in the city, which at this point we're not, but to give to the county just to um. So we're not wasting our time on sites that simply wouldn't work for outdoor shelters. Um, and we also came up with different types of shelter, like just having people set up their own tents versus. Um, supplying tents like ice fishing tents that um, can have heaters and are a much better of much better quality. To all the way up to um. You know, tight tiny houses, which probably no one really has money for, but we just created a table for all of those and what they would involve and what they would cost and. What the requirements would be to set something like that up. So it's really a committee that's getting a lot of work done, I think. Um, and then on the thirteenth, I attended the General Twomey County Commission on Homelessness Homelessness Meeting. And again, that meeting gets a lot is getting a lot of work done. First, it's it's large. Um, and we've just added new people to it. It's over twenty people, so it's a a large group, but I think it. I think we're doing some good work. Um, on the fourteenth, I um, attended uh, the California Association of Councils of Governments. Um, as the TCT Twomey County Transportation Council Representative, and that actually is a really interesting. Um, meeting and the things that I just want to bring up for maybe the council, just sort of to plant a seed for the council for goal setting. Um, in the future, um, there is um, Governor Newsom has presented his preliminary budget. It, you know, it will change, I think, many times between now and the final budget, but there is um. Extra money for low income housing. There is. Extra money for wildfire. There's extra money for um, electric vehicles, um, infrastructure and um. Um, just a lot of a lot of good possibilities out there, and I will follow those those funding sources as the um. The budget evolves and um. See if we can maybe find some money to 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 um, bring to TCTC and and to the city. Um, and the thing that was also interesting to me, and this is sort of back to social equity, um, is that the um. The California State Association of Councils of Governments also has started and has is was we approved. Um, the signing of an equity training contract and it's um. Um, for CalGUP members, um, a year long training program to address issues of racial equity and outreach and program design. Um, and this group was very, very supportive of that, and this isn't a um. A necessarily a group from the left, as people call us. Um, it's it's really a I think a very balanced group of people, and there was overwhelming and unanimous support for that. And I think. And I also attended just um, a the Blue Zone Summit for a short time. I actually had forgotten. That I didn't put it in on my schedule, so I'd forgotten it, but lots of good work going on there and a really. Interesting group of people trying to just help with the health of our community. So that's um, that's it for me, I think. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Such. Councilmember Garavina.
Excuse me, yeah. I attended the um. So you not the fall waste committee meeting on Wednesday. Um. And I'm trying to remember if all, if anything that um. You know, um. Strictly city related, and I can't think of anything straight offhand. Um, the Transportation Commission, I think they count the other was canceled for this month. So there won't be a test to cancel on February. Um, and I think that's about it for me.
Thank you. Okay, good. He can hear us. Okay, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So from the meetings, there's nothing really notable to share, but I would like to. One last time, thank our former city administrator, Mary Rose Ruticanga, for having worked hard and kept. Doing very useful and important work up to the very last day. Uh, it would have been very easy just to say I'm resigning and let things just kind of glide into the future. And instead, I think she left the city in a better condition for Ms. Eads to resume. And then I would thank, like to thank Melissa for taking this position. Out and all of the staff who has made this transition as easy as possible, and it's not always easy. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, just uh, for the public's knowledge, I received a postcard. I can't read it. Um, but it's from the mayor of Kirishma in Japan. So. Maybe one of the first things we can do is just send them a nice postcard or letter thanking them, and I don't know, maybe if anyone knows Japanese, we can. Decipher this because I have no idea, but some beautiful pictures on here. So um. I just want to say thank you for being here. Thank you for applying. Um, I thank everyone for showing up tonight. Um, I love having our council meetings full of people, um, especially when we can get together and all be nice to one another and still disagree. That's really nice to have. So. Um, look forward to the next at least six, at least six months. So looking forward to that and um, yeah. So we will call the meeting over at.
It looks like Colette has her hand up.
Oh, oh, uh, go ahead, Colette.
I just I just want to say that I received an email from John Williams, Connie or Connie Williams' husband um. In Boise, Idaho, and he's doing well. He he loves, he loves um, he loves living there. He's really. Very pleased. So I just wanted to kind of put Connie's name out again and and uh. I I just was pleased to hear from him. That's all. Sorry to sorry to do that. I know that's kind of irregular.
Thanks for sharing. Yeah, that's okay. Okay, so we will call the meeting over at six twenty PM, and thank you to everyone.